Good evening. This is the June 9, 2010, meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission. I'll call it to order. Roll call of members. Let the record show that Alan Kraus is out this evening. Item number three, I need an acceptance of minutes of the May 12 meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mike Marshon, second by Bob Nance. Number four, acceptance of the meeting minutes of the April 19 meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mike Marshon and second by Howard. Thank you. Now we have a public comment period. If there's anything that anyone in the audience would like to speak about that's not on the agenda, be welcome to come up at this time. I do want to make a note that we do have, one item has been struck from the agenda. It is item 7B, the Dr. Phillips property. And then just to let you know, this is the Planning Commission meeting, which will be followed by a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which will be followed by a Zoning Commission meeting. So this will be a long evening for us. Okay? No public comments? So we'll move on to item number six, the Saul Hanna subdivision, lots five, excuse me, lots B5A1 and B5A2.
James Faugre representing the Sweare family on the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, and corrected on the fly. Asking the commission for approval.
I would like to open this up for any comments from anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item. Public comment is closed. Now if the commissioners have anything they'd like to discuss? If there's nothing to discuss, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve by Bob Nance and second, was that Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item B, John Marcel property, lots IA and IB.
I'm Clint Quentin Mall representing W.J. Quentin Mall surveyors, asking for the Planning Commission approval of the John Marcel family partition. There was four comments. The, actually, the first two was a little mix-up with the road names. Gloria Road was not on the vicinity, and so I actually changed that and fixed that. So it is Gloria Road, and then just labeled the adjoining, and then the flood zone X-shaped.
I'd like to open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Okay. I'm going to close public hearing. Would the commissioners have any comments or questions?
I had a question. I was trying to figure out where there's a prop, there's a building and a, like a camper of some type, where is that related to this? It's like a camper with, it's overgrown with grass.
To be honest, I don't know.
So are there no existing properties on IA and IB as of now that you know about?
Not to my knowledge, but I can, let me see my client's. I'm going to let him come speak on any structures on how to relate.
What is your question, sir?
There's, when I was looking at this area, I thought there was a building with a, like a camper of some type to the left side, and I was trying to figure out where that's related to this drawing.
Building with a camper? So there's none that I know of that exists there. That property is in the back of a brick house, and then there's another little house where the lady is deceased, and then there is another house, and then there is the ditch. That lot run from the ditch to the back of the brick house. There's no other building or anything there. The other side of the road is just all clear lots.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Julio, second by, I think it was Steve Barrow.
Yes, Howard.
Oh, excuse me.
Just so it gets a first.
Howard Dalton. Next is item C, Leo Wilson Jr. property, lots 5C1A and 5C1B.
Okay. We had one comment from the Planning Department. That was LW lane should be reduced to 20 foot, go back to a single lot. That was done per Planning Department's request. And then there was two comments from the drainage. One was about the pipeline right-of-way should be labeled, and so I did so. And then the flood zone again, X-shaped.
Yes, I got a question for staff before we go further. He's talking about the comments. We don't have that sheet anymore. Can we assume that all those have been addressed before they got to us, and so that's why we don't have it?
I started just taking off the comments that have been addressed, just to kind of clean up things.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Okay. Then I would like to open it up for public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak on this item, come forward. And if there's no one, then we'll move back, close public hearing. Any more questions from commissioners?
The western parcel of land, is that going to become a third lot in the future?
My client had no intention. I did ask him that, but he just wanted to join it. It is, of course, I guess, a possibility, but there was no plans now because, as you can see, the structures right there prevent, in addition, I mean, I guess, if they removed that shit and whatever, they could turn that, but there was no plans, I guess. I guess it is possible.
I know, but you're showing that servitude, the private servitude of passage on the other side, on the south side of the lot, you know, and if one day you want to do that, you're going to have some challenges.
They didn't have any intention too, so.
Okay.
Well, I would like to make a comment about this property, just because it's in Business Park zoning, and the way I read the ordinance, the minimum lot size is 43,560 square feet. Yeah. So to me, I don't think this fits, because I understand it's a family partition, but it doesn't fit the requirements of the underlying zoning.
Yes, ma'am. And we did discuss that in our office, and the basis for our approval is the fact that the subdivision regulations say that a family partition has a minimum lot size of a half an acre. It does not say in that section to refer to the development code for minimum lot size. And so while we agree that there is a divergence of the opinion here, the development code does say the minimum lot size through a family partition in Business Park is one acre. The subdivision regulations say the minimum size for a family partition is a half acre. We think that the subdivision ordinance needs to be revised to say, refer to the development code for minimum lot size, or the development code needs to say something else. I think the subdivision code needs to refer to the development code if we want to enforce a larger lot size in the other zoning categories.
In our, in the subdivision code, is there a provision that says that, you know, refers to the guidelines of the development?
That's correct. And we found multiple examples of subdivisions of property where we did not hold that standard. It's just something that's been enforced in different ways on different occasions, and we as staff feel that until we clean that language up, it says half acre in the subdivision code.
Would this be an area that would be addressed in any way in the master plan, or would it be, need the subdivision committee take it?
Subdivision committee needs to make a recommendation to revise the subdivision ordinance.
Okay. Brian, would you make a note and let's add that to our next meeting? Add that to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
On lot 5-C-1-A, is 2.05, does that include the western portion of that lot also?
Yes, it is connected by a 20-foot.
Okay. But that is included in the 2.05.
Absolutely.
Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. I think Howard beat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Nance. Item D, Stanley P. Gotrow property, lots 1B1 and 1B2.
There was, this one can get a little confusing when you first look at it. We had several comments. Wanted to change the name, Watson Lane. We did that. We corrected that. It was Watson Gotrow Road. This was done in the anticipation of the, going to a 30-foot common servitude of passage. And so we were reducing the 40-foot due to the fact that, one, it was in the wrong location according to the improvements, and in addition to setback lines from a 40 encroached on several different structures. So we reduced that to 30 feet. Let me see, staff. So we go to number four. Staff recommends the applicant revoke the existing servitude, the application, that was a recommendation. As a note, label the buildings on the setbacks, and we did that as well, so non-conforming structures. And then we had from the drainage comments, showed the flood zones. They were already shown, so that was a little bit of confusion there. And then labeled the ditch as the lateral ditch of Bayou North Six, which we have done as well.
Then I'd like to open it for public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item? And we close public hearing. Comments, questions from commissioners?
How wide is this servitude going north into the remaining property?
It's the new 30-foot private servitude of passage.
So there's no, the existing 40 doesn't go beyond the property?
No, the existing 40 went, I put both at the same depth. I didn't change the depth at all, just the width.
Okay. But the existing 40-foot right-of-way, how far north did it go?
It goes up to lot 1C and ends there.
So it goes all the way up to the Watson Gotrow Jr. property to the north?
Yeah, I do have the reference map. I want to take a look.
That's quite all right. It's okay. Well, so exactly why do you have to reduce it again to 30 feet? Why can't you provide the full 40 feet?
Due to the gentleman that owns 1BC, there was multiple reasons. First reason was that the 40 was in the wrong location and encroached on several other buildings, the setback lines. And so to lessen that impact, we reduced it to 30, because we're all going to the common 30. And then additionally, the setbacks, the owner or the son Trey getting 1B2, his house plans would be more flexible if it allowed that extra 10 feet.
All right. But if you were moving it over like you planned, you're effectively reducing the amount of setback. Go ahead, sir.
We recommended on several of the partitions that are up this month that they reduce them to the 30 feet, request the variance under the understanding that we're trying to get all of these partitions to a common servitude width. Using these new criteria that we've worked through, it's going to the council at the next meeting and hopefully adopted at the following meeting, we made the recommendation to the applicants that they reduce them to 30 feet, recognizing that today it's a variance, but in theory, in 30 to 45 days, this will be the new rule, 30 feet for all servitudes.
And even with the lots to the north, I guess the reason I'm going is I don't know how many lots there are to the north.
It stops at C2, correct?
Yes, one, it stops.
It's one lot.
Right. Stops at 1C.
It's lot 1C and that's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's one lot now. How big is lot 1C? I mean, if you know offhand.
Yeah, 1.743 acres.
Okay, 1.7, so it could be split.
It had to be split under the current regulations that would be adopted by the council, meaning that five lots per private servitude of passage, absolutely, according to the regulations.
All right. Thank you. I didn't have the information, how many lots total there were.
Any more questions? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve by Howard Dalton, second by Bob Nance.
Thank you.
Item E, David B. Orso property, tracks AB1C1, AB1C2, AB1C3, and AB1C4.
So comment number one was a 40-foot private servitude is required for lanes, road. Staff suggest the applicant require for the variance for the 30. And so we did that. And they wanted to subtract lot AB1C1 since it had ownership out to the public road. And number three was a recommendation. And we discussed that, and then the drainage comments was labeled the ditch as lateral of Black Bayou. And that was done as well.
Then I'd like to open public hearing on this item. Anybody would like to speak? Close public hearing. Questions and comments from commissioners?
On the little lane that runs south, that, it appears to me that it deadends into the AB1C3 and AB1C4. Am I correct in that, or does it go further?
No, it ends, the front setback line is what you see.
Well, I thought it was. So basically, if they run a fence down it, each property wouldn't have 30 feet, they don't have 15 feet.
They run a fence. It ends at the lot line, so it doesn't go into the lots.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the fact that it ends, they could in theory put a fence all the way, and then they'd have a 15-foot wide servitude.
Fence all the way. I'm not following you.
You're talking about the north-south line between AB1C. The north-south line between those two lots, if somebody built a fence there, you'd end up with a 15-foot servitude of passage into each one of those lots, and not 30 or not even 20.
Oh, yes, that's a brother and a sister receiving, that's a brother and a sister receiving a property?
They fight. I think it would have been better if you'd have gone into both those lots with that servitude of passage to eliminate that in the future, because if one of them sells it and the person that they sell it to doesn't like them or something.
I'd be happy to. What's your footage, 20, 30?
Staff, do we have any requirements on that? No?
Well, it's got to be at least 20 feet, and it's not. It's 15.
I think if you just went in and squared it off so that you'd end up with a 30 by 30 square, and then it's half and half, that would be more than adequate.
Well, I can go into the property.
Into the property, 30 feet.
Right, 30 feet, right. Okay, no problem.
Jeff, did you want to say something?
I mean, because we typically don't have rules when it comes to the dead-end road like that, and we've allowed them before just to split it at the end, and that's been the policy in the past, so however, if you guys can decide something.
Well, we might have let them do it in the past, but that's still, it's 15 feet, and that's wrong any way you look at it. Old regulations, new regulations, whatever. And somewhere down the road, it will bite us. You don't think the property owner would have a problem with that? I move to approve with changes.
Well, let's state that, though. Let's say contingent on...
Okay, contingent on an additional 30 feet going into the lot AB1C-3, AB1C-4.
Okay. And the variance for the private access. Okay. And I'm sorry, Bob made the motion and who seconded? Howard? Simple divisions, 7A, Barbara R. Jefferson property, lot 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Representing the Jefferson family on the following simple division with a variance, I think all but one comment was addressed was for the name of the private, for servitude of passage, and we do have the name for it, and it did get approved. Asking the commission for approval.
Okay. Then I'd like to open this item up for public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak, come forward. And we'll close the public hearing. Questions and comments from commissioners? Or I'll take a motion if there are none.
I recommend approval, subject to the plant being amended to show the name of the servitude of passage and the variance as requested in comment number two of the staff report.
Second.
Approval based on the variance and the comments being addressed, Julio Dumas and seconded by Howard.
Thank you.
Item B was struck from the agenda. That was the Dr. Phillips property. Then next would be item C, the Linda R. Montabano property.
From the Planning Department, we had one comment. It was, they wanted to know if they had family members residing in a second unit. That was a little confusion. I had the structure labeled as concrete house blocks. It's just the blocks, it's not a residence. I could see where that could get confused, but it's just the blocks for a house that's been removed. And so that comment was taken care of. And then we had something about the certification note, and I discussed that with the person who made that comment, we cleared that up. And then they wanted to remove the term extension from Rogers A. Road. We discussed that, and that, in doing so, would cause some confusion between the private servitude of passage and the actual public road to actually remove the extension, because that's how it was originally named. So we left it as is. And then labeled all the buildings as existing nonconformities, which was done.
Then I'd like to open this item up for public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak, come forward. And we'll close public hearing. Questions and comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment for staff. Y'all kind of changed the format up, and Clint's up here explaining stuff that we don't know what he's talking about. I'd like that, those problems back on there and how he solved them. It's kind of hard on, you're sitting up there.
Well, how about, how about an alternative? We've already, staff already responded that those have already been addressed, and maybe in the future Clint won't have to address them. He can just, he likes that too.
Yeah, maybe just let him know. Okay, that's a good idea.
All right, we can go that direction too.
Absolutely.
Save time.
Love that.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Bob Nance, second by Howard Dalton.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Number eight, Sandy Point subdivision.
Hello, my name is Derek Murphy with Quality Engineering, representing Sandy Point subdivision. This is a 120-lot subdivision. Its existing zoning in this area is MU2. This is at the, near the corner of Highway 930 and Highway 42. Presently, A and White Road is a substandard road, so we have worked with DPW and staff to work out a compromise where we will do some improvements on A and White Road and the intersection of A and White Road and Highway 930. All other comments have been addressed by us with staff and discussed, and I look forward to any questions y'all might have.
I would like to open it up for public hearing first. If there's anyone who would like to speak, you would come up and you would sign in over here on your left, and then you can have three minutes to speak. Ma'am, you can come up to the podium and... He's going to be our spokesman for us, I don't know. Okay. Well, you only get three minutes, though. Each person gets three minutes, but you don't, you can't join them together. Okay. Okay.
Let me correct you on that. According to our bylaws, if you have a spokesman for a group, they are allowed five minutes.
Okay, that's...
That was in order for homeowners association, individuals like that.
You're right.
Since they were representing numerous people.
Okay. If you would state your name, sir?
I'm John Polovic.
Okay.
I'm actually representing A and White Homeowners Association, and this is Cheryl Chris and Brandon Bird. We're all lot owners across the area from the subdivision that's in question. And see if there are three of us, and we just get three minutes, is that a total of nine minutes?
No, sir.
Oh, okay, it's five minutes.
You get five minutes, yes, sir.
I'm just playing with you. We are concerned, because the subdivision represents about 120 homes, we have seven across nine, across A and White Road from these two homes. One of the things we're concerned about is the additional sewage treatment plant that will be within 30 feet of an acre lot that I personally have. There is already a sewage treatment plant in the adjacent subdivision, probably 80 feet away. So recently, that sewage treatment plant has had some odors and had some oil slick coming from that area. We are concerned, number one, that we're going to have another sewage treatment plant making two within about 100 feet of the A and White Road. Secondly, we're concerned that the A. N. White Road is substandard and that only a part of it seems to be set up for widening. It's a dead-end road, and as you move down the road beyond the pond that's going to be built, it gets, it deteriorates pretty rapidly. Third, we have a situation in which all four lot owners, for some reason, have lots that go beyond A. N. White into the subdivision area. They actually terminate on the other side of the road. And we wonder what's going to happen there. I believe we're 12 to 15 feet on the other side of the road from our main lots. Fourth, there is a flood history in that area. Four years ago, there was a water came up to the extent that it completely covered my acre lot in December of 2006. We're concerned about 120 homes going in, producing even more disturbance to the water flow and whether it's appropriate what's been done to this point or what's planned. So the issues are the traffic. 42 and 930 is a really bad intersection. There have been a number of accidents right around the corner there, I guess. It's pretty, pretty well-known. Is a traffic light planned for that intersection between 40 and, because 40, where 42 come into 930 and then A. N. White forks off. It's very congested. Also, A. N. White Road is a dead end. Has there been any concern given to taking A. N. White to relieve some of the traffic all the way to Parker? Those are our concerns.
Okay, and Mr. Murphy will address all those concerns when you're, as soon as you're finished.
Okay.
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter?
I just have a couple of questions. One is the drainage, because I have a piece of property that backs up to this. The other thing, I have livestock on my property, and I was wondering if there's going to be any security. I know some subdivisions put in fences, you know, to keep children. A friend of mine has a piece of property, and his cows have been shot with paintball guns. So some subdivisions have a six-foot fence, cedar fence. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this? And we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Murphy, would you like to address these items?
Yes, ma'am, I'll do what I can. As far as the sewer treatment plant location, the sewer treatment plants, according to staff and DPW, they want the sewer treatment plants along the roads now for the future sewer. Is that correct, Ben?
The move has been to have them move towards the front of the subdivision so they'll be easily tied into any future sewer infrastructure that's added, but the rule is it's 100 feet from the nearest residence, yeah.
And we'll double-check all structures once we go out there and do a survey, and we'll make sure that the treatment plant is 100 feet from the structures. And we'll place it according, in that area, according to the 100-foot minimum. And, you know, there's also other treatment plants in the area. We are looking at maybe combining treatment plants. Don't know if that's ever an option, but we are looking at that. But at this point, I can't say whether we're going to do that or not. A. N. White Road, he's correct. All of our traffic is either going to, is going to leave our subdivision and hit A. N. White Road, go to 930, or come down Fox Ridge Drive. So we're not widening A. N. White Road past our connection, because none of our traffic is going to use that. Highway 42 is, as we know, is congested in this area. There are DOTD plans being worked on to alleviate some of this congestion. DOTD has reviewed what we submitted to them. We are presently waiting for a letter of compliance. Their main concern was the intersection of 930 and A. N. White Road. That's why we're doing those improvements on that intersection and the road. But we're waiting for a letter of compliance, but we do have an email trail saying that they approve it, and this is going to work. As far as flooding in the area, we are detaining and mitigating all of our drainage, our increased drainage. We're also, between A. N. White Road and Highway 930, we're going to go and clean that ditch. We did find that those culverts are stocked up under 930 and A. N. White Road, so we are going to do some improvements there. And we have done some feasibility and drainage analysis on that. As far as the four lots, being, we did find their property corners. It is on our side. The map shows right-of-way as being there, and on the other side of the right-of-way is a 35-foot building line for those houses. So we did confirm that it is a 40-foot right-of-way right there. As far as the fence, at this point, with the drainage, we are rerouting the ditch around the perimeter of the subdivision, as you see here. We have worked out a compromise, I guess, with Drainage Department, and we are going to put a fence along the servitude line at the rear of the lots between 29 and 52 and in some of the other areas that they're requesting it in order to keep people from building fences across the servitudes and that kind of thing. So we are going to have a ditch going around. There is a ditch running through the property right now. So we are going to be able to do some drainage improvements there. And as far as paintball, Mr. Wells, I don't know. Can't answer that one, but we are going to try to have some fences in areas, so. And so I think I've addressed everything on there.
Let me, a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
You say that the, that you've confirmed that A. N. White is a 40-foot right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
So you can take the word apparent off the plat?
Right, we'll put apparent on there because we haven't actually did the actual survey.
But now you do. Okay. The property lines that are on your side of A. N. White, are they on your side of the right-of-way or just on your side of the pavement?
They're actually, their property corners are actually on our side of the right-of-way.
All of them?
The pins that we found, yes.
So do you have frontage on A. N. White?
According to their map, it shows a right-of-way, 40-foot right-of-way, and it shows those pins.
Okay, let me try it a different way. So there's a sliver of land between the right-of-way, the, which is north on this map, between the east end of the, east edge of the right-of-way of A. N. White and your westerly property line and the right-of-way that belongs to these folks.
No, on their map, they actually show, they have, they showed a pin, and it says a 40-foot right-of-way on their map.
But it shows it up to the property line?
Shows it up to the property line.
Okay, but, okay. All right. So then there isn't a sliver of land between the two?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, let me throw out a question here. The ditches that run around the perimeter of the subdivision, that where you're so kindly going to put a fence up at what would be the kind of the rear of a given property to prevent the landowner from building a fence across the ditch or the drainage thing, which would act as a dam. But if I understand what's happening here correctly, the real property line is going to be, in this case, on the south side of that drainage ditch, where you can put the fence on the north side there at the drainage servitude, correct?
Correct.
Now, somebody buys the land, okay? They own it. To the best of my knowledge, at that point, there's nothing that says they can't take and move that fence because they own the land. And then it's an enforcement issue because it's blocking the drainage ditch. So my question to you is, why not take and change the property lines and make the drainage ditch common area? That way, nobody can put a fence across it ever. Do you understand my point?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we did talk about that with Bill Ruin. And, you know, to have that land feet title, he wanted the fence and the servitude, and that's what we agreed to do.
Well, the servitude would still be there, but the property owner for the property where it crosses would not own the servitude.
That's right, but it is a public drainage servitude, yes, sir.
I just see this as being Pandora's box. People are going to build across it. It's not going to work as designed. I've seen it happen too many times.
No matter what you do, it's going to become
It's going to do it, I mean...
It's a current enforcement issue for the parish now, where people, when people build fences across drainage ditches and they have to go in and force them to take them out.
Right, but most times they have the fence on the other side of the ditch or a swell ditch or something like that. This, we're actually going to provide that fence, and you're right, they could go through the expense and take down that fence and cross that, cross, it's going to be a pretty decent-sized ditch. We've got a 30-foot drainage servitude.
And there needs to be some sort of deed restriction put on every property deed out there to make it clearly understood they can't do this.
It's, usually there is here, Howard, but they're ignoring it.
Well, yeah.
It's being ignored extensively. It's not just, it's not just fences. It's to the point where swimming pools and gazebos and everything else is going out there. And the commission did try and address this several years ago by requiring the developer to build fences on the servitude line to try and discourage people from going and building their own fences. They could build the fences on each side of their lot, but as far as the back, there would be a fence, a privacy fence, built at the 15-foot drain servitude line.
I understand your point.
So is there, is there a cure-all? Is there one answer that's going to solve this? I don't know.
The only way I can think to solve it is if the landowner doesn't own the property in any way, shape, fashion, or form where that ditch is, then the parish owns it.
And we haven't required anybody else to do that, and we can't just all of a sudden decide that this subdivision is going to be the example. I think it's something that probably needs to be studied with the Department of Public Works and legal and see what are the, what can we do and how is the best way to approach it.
Well, I agree. It's not an easy fact to solve. But I don't want to sit here and say, yeah, let's go ahead and do this, and this poor gentleman has got flooding on his land, and everybody else because the drainage ditch doesn't work. And we help foster the fact that it doesn't work. I don't know that we can fix this one, but it needs to be addressed.
Agreed.
Well, you've got different conditions with each development, too. So you, I don't think you can just, just come...
Why don't we add it to the subdivision subcommittee agenda, Brian?
That's Liz Gross. One other question, although you don't have a letter from L.DOT, can you share with us what that, what that's going to look like, what that intersection's going to look like?
Well, the options that we have right now, and what we're looking at is, is one of two options. One is, we're going to try to acquire more right-of-way. If we can't get the more right-of-way, we're going to put a 27-foot curb and gutter street in there with some drainage. If we can get the right-of-way, then we can do a 20-foot open ditch-type section. The stipulations that were put on, put on us or recommended to us by L.DOT and staff was a 300-foot site distance at that intersection with a minimum of 75-degree connection. So we're going to adhere to those geometric standards.
Okay, what about that great big oak tree in that intersection? I don't know if it's in right-of-way or if it's on the gentleman's property.
Well, we're going to do everything we can to save that big oak tree.
Now, you know I've heard that before.
I understand.
And that's the first thing that happens, that bulldozer...
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know if that's on the gentleman's property.
And we're not sure. We haven't surveyed that, so we're not sure.
While we're on surveys, I need to ask that gentleman something. Where is your property? And do you have a plat that shows the eastern boundary of your property?
Put it up on the screen.
Yeah, if you can put it on the screen, it'd be better. Put it on the screen.
Wait, this, let me do it this way. Well, this is E1A and E1B. This is my property here. This is A. N. White along here. And these are the four lots. And this is the corner lot with the tree that was just discussed right there. And I should also mention that in the four years that I've lived there, there have been four cars that have overturned in the ditch along this area here because of that curve and the deepness of the ditch, including a couple of serious accidents. So this... Those are the four lots with the corner lot here.
Well, it's kind of hard. Who owns that, the very small triangular lot? Oh, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, that one.
It's Joseph. It's Joseph's last name.
Okay, now, does...
It's one of the members of the subdivision.
According to what I'm looking at right here, you're, that property does go across that 40-foot. It's kind of hard for me to tell, but it looks like it, that the property line is to the
That's correct. That's where their pins are. That is correct. Over here to the side, you see a 30-foot offset. Over here, they actually show, I'm trying to find my map, they show, they do say a 40-foot right-of-way, I believe, on this side over here. If I can find my maps.
Well, there's a lot of lines there. I'm trying to figure out which one is their property line and which one is the right-of-way line.
It's pretty obvious which one's a property line.
This one's a 35-foot building line here.
And then the two dash lines is at utility, and then the rest of it is the right-of-way.
It looks like the right-of-way stops before it gets to the eastern side. I mean, that's what I'm reading it.
That's a 14-foot edge of pavement.
The two lines in the middle there, that's the pavement.
Oh, that's the pavement, okay. Ooh, 14-foot?
Yes, sir.
That's why we're doing improvements on that road, yes.
Well, let me ask you this. Are you going to do the improvements before you start it? Because we've been stung on this before. Developers promise one thing, and then they get a plat approved, and then they're long gone.
Well, we still have to come back before you with the final plat. So if the improvements aren't done by the final plat, we'll be ready to sell homes, and, yes, sir. Please don't, please don't approve the plat.
Okay, Derek, I see your street plan or your street section. I don't see any sidewalks. Are you putting sidewalks in here?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
How about trees?
Trees?
I know some of the other subdivisions we've seen have a tree on every lot.
At this time, it's not in our plan, but we could talk to the owner. As of right now, we don't have the owner here. He got called out. And so I couldn't commit to that right now.
Okay, but this is just a preliminary plan, so that could be added.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question for staff. How wide is 930? At where A. N. White hits it?
It's only about 18 feet wide itself, but...
It is 18?
It is a state road also.
And how about the width of Fox Run Drive pavement?
It's 24, I believe.
24, okay.
Any more questions from staff? Oh, excuse me, from commissioners? Anyone ready to make a motion?
When do you think you're going to have this, when are you going to bring the final plat? Well, you're not going to bring it until after you've built... I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon... I'll make a motion to prove contingent upon, um, satisfaction of the, of the requirements for the intersection of LA 930, A and White, and Tiger Pass Drive, that it meet, uh, Ascension Parish and LDOT requirements.
Now, is that including the recommendation of 60 feet from staff?
Yes.
Put that in there.
I'm sorry, and the staff recommendation, I'm sorry.
Well, we did, we did the compromise, 'cause we don't have, we don't have any ability to buy right of way. And that's why we had the two options, whether we could buy right of way and do an open ditch type section, or leave the right of way as is and do a curb and gutter with drainage. Uh, that's why we had the two options, 'cause we, we do not have the ability to purchase right of way, or force someone to, to give us right of way.
And you're already on your map, you're already showing that you're donating of the portion that's on your side of the right of way.
That's correct. We making it from a 40-foot right of way to a 60-foot right of way already.
So, so part, part of the, the decision you guys need to make is whether or not that, that trade-off is acceptable to you, um, the 60-foot right of way versus the 27-foot section? And, and speaking with DPW, the parish, if the, the road is improved to 27-foot section, that matches the, the internal roads in the new subdivision, and, and, DPW and planning feel like that would be preferable to just getting 60-foot of right of way that we're not necessarily gonna go out and improve anytime soon.
I'm not following you, so, so you're gonna give me 20 feet in lieu of building the road?
No, sir. I'm go, what we're talking about is, is there, with the stipulation, they're acquiring that we go to this track TJ1 and purchase another 20-foot of right of way.
Which is track, track TJ1 is where?
Right there on the east side.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
What we're saying is, we don't know if we can get that 20-foot of right of way.
Correct.
So, instead of, with, with the 20-foot, with the 20-foot additional right of way, we can do a 20-foot wide open ditch, which matches, basically just improve the road as there. Okay, just like you would an overlay, or the parish would do an overlay, or something like that. Just improve the width. If we can't purchase that, we will, we will have to fit the new road inside a 40-foot right of way, which would be a 27-foot curb and gutter street with subsurface drainage. And that was the compromise we worked out with DPW and, and the staff.
Okay, so you build a 20-foot curb and gutter with subsurface drainage, but to avoid any future conflicts on the portion of the, of, of frontage fronting on A and White, you still donate the 20 feet?
The, the 20 foot's gonna be donated no matter what.
But that's their 20 feet. They can't get this.
But they don't have eminent domain rights. They can't go over there and force somebody to do that.
That's why we, we came up with the additional option.
But then you've got all these people having to go through that little bitty stretch of.
No, no, no. The road's not gonna look any different. It's gonna be 27-foot curb and gutter. Same, same road's not gonna change any. It's gonna be same width the whole way. Physically, it's gonna be identical. But you're gonna have more green on one side, on part of it, and less green on the other side.
Parish regulations stipulate that a new subdivision accessing a substandard road within any road with less than 18 feet of pavement must acquire the 60-foot right of way to the point that DPW designate, which in this case is Highway 930. And that's where the 60-foot right of way.
So, how do you propose they do that? They don't have the right to do eminent domain. They don't have the right, they gotta get on their knees and beg. Unless you go buy it for them and they pay for it.
Thus, the proposed compromise.
That's why we worked out the additional section.
That's where the proposed compromise came in.
Okay, so, and they're willing to meet that compromise?
Yes, just past their entrance. They're not improving A and White beyond their entrance. There's a line on that map that shows where that stops.
Uh-huh. Want some of the big map?
Oh, the little map here, it's just hard to see.
You know what? When I was your age, I could read that.
It's, it's on there.
Well, I have a question about the, if you do the 27-foot with subsurface drainage.
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna drain down to the existing ditch that outfalls to Muddy Creek? Where's that water gonna go?
It's gonna go down to, it's gonna go, it's gonna go down that, to that culvert that crosses under A and White Road further down, yes, and go to Muddy Creek. Correct, as it does today. We're not changing any drainage patterns.
So, you're basically gonna be dumping that water on these people?
It goes there today. We're not increasing the water.
You will increase it.
Yeah, once you pave that area, that's gonna have a lot more, you reduce the absorption area. So, how are you going to address that additional flow that's already flooding out the other gentleman that lives over there?
Well, we would over detain, what we doing is, we did a drainage analysis at the culvert crossing under A and White Road of all the upstream area. So, what we would do is, we would over detain the subdivision in order to keep our, our predevelop, our post-developed flows equal to the predeveloped flow that's going under A and White Road today.
Okay, so the subdivision drain is gonna go into the detention lake?
That's correct.
Okay, the drainage, I'm talking about specifically, what's gonna come off that 27-foot curb and gutter area? That's gonna be solely dedicated coming down, 'cause that's not gonna go into your retention pond.
I understand.
So, that is gonna be increased outflow, correct?
But what I'm saying is, according to parish code, post-developed flows under A and White Road has to be equal to predeveloped flows.
Mm-hmm.
So, we will make that happen.
How?
Well, we could over detain the subdivision in the detention pond in order to offset that increase in flow.
That, that doesn't help that man, though.
Yes, it does, because we still, we're gonna, we're gonna, the same flow that's going under A and White Road today will go on the A and White Road.
Yeah, but from a practical perspective, in order for you to accomplish that, let's face it, I mean, you know, when you, if you went to a curb and gutter with subsurface drainage, that subsurface drainage is gonna have to be retained somewhere. It's just, you're gonna end up having to put it in your lake anyway, right?
We might have to, yes.
Right, so you're gonna have to address that in, in drainage calculations.
Right, we gotta have to do final drainage calculations, showing that we are adhering to the drainage ordinance.
Correct.
With our construction plans.
Well, I'm very concerned about that additional drainage off the improved section of the road, because the only way I can see you can put it in your drainage pond would be to pump it in there. Because remember, it's already subsurface.
That's correct. Well, the, the lake is, I mean, our, our subdivision drainage is subsurface also. I mean, the lake's gonna be deep enough to be able to accept it.
How deep?
Well, I mean, we've probably got four feet for just a static water surface, and then we go, you know, below that. So, probably 10 feet deep.
Yeah, that's gonna be well documented?
Yes, sir.
Dan, are you satisfied with all of this, regarding drain?
And, and we've made clear to them that they're, when they come up, they're, ah, come back with their construction plans, that we're gonna verify that the drainage ordinance is still being adhered, not drainage ordinance, the drainage study that they prepared is gonna be adhered to. And, and I'll add that, as, this development is adjacent to Parisian Villas, and as part of that development plan, which in the notes we talked about, they took a portion of this watershed, out of this watershed due to previous servitude or right of way issues, um, for their drainage. And that, that has all been factored into this. So, there actually, there's a net reduction, um, to Muddy Creek from this development, because of the portion that's been taken out to Parisian Villas. And they accounted for that within, within the, the current drainage study for this subdivision.
I mean, I'll read all that, but I wanna be sure that that's done that way.
Right, and, and I coordinated with the, the drainage, East, East Ascension Drainage District during all of this, to make sure that we were all on the same page, and everybody was in, in agreement.
Because we don't want these people to get any more water than they already have.
Right, drainage is aware of. Parisian Villas has a very large detention pond to address the increased flow into that watershed that previously went to Muddy Creek.
Buddy, public hearing is closed.
Uh, I got a question for you, that, you know, the portion of the, of the road that you're going to improve. I mean, don't you think you oughta take it south at least, beyond what you see as Lot 90, and, and to the nearest property line closest to the end of Lot 90? I mean, just to take it 20 feet beyond the entrance, little, dare I say, cheesy. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not talking about a great, great distance, but at least it'll make it a little bit more.
I can't, I can't speak for the owner. We did meet code here, but I personally will talk to him about that. I, I, and, I mean, we're not talking about a, a great deal more expense, but I can't speak for the owners on that.
The 30-foot servitude, which direction does that drain, east or west?
It drains west, uh, west.
So, that's gonna be even more water going that way?
Well, no, what we're doing is, we're actually taking the ditch that runs through development already, putting that water on A and White Road and just rerouting it. So, it's, it's no additional water.
Anytime you have pavement, you, and houses, you're gonna, it's gonna be more water going in that ditch.
Right, but again, we did, the drainage study took all that into account, and our post-developed flows match our predeveloped flows under A and White Road.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try this. I'm gonna make a, a motion to recommend approval, subject to the following conditions. I think it's important that you show on the east side of A and White Road where the lot lines are, just so that we can figure out where these four lots are. Okay? Secondly, I think you need to extend your, the improvements to A and White Road to at least the southern limits of Lot 90, or, and/or the nearest, um, lot across, lot line, east-west lot line across A and White Road, that's beyond that lot line. Okay? Subject to the parish and LDOT having approval for the intersection of A and White and Highway 30 and the geometry that they would require, and relocating the sewer treatment plant to ensure, you know, if required, to meet the 100-foot separation, as required by parish rules.
Julio, would you consider, uh, mentioning the project timeline dates in that as well? To make sure they're adhered to and understood?
Yes, it's subject to, to project timeline dates. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, and I'm not sure I got all of this. Stacy, did you get it?
The recording is.
Okay. Subject to the lot lines being showed on the east side, the extension road improvements from Lot 90 to?
To the, to the southern end of Lot 90, or the, uh, property line that's across A and White, that's closest to Lot 90, which elevates further, okay?
Okay, and then the intersection improvements, the treatment plant being 100 feet away from a residence, and the timeline dates being adhered to. And that was by Julio, seconded by Steve Barrow.
Object.
Object.
Okay, anyone else? Motion carries. Okay, number nine, committee reports, the subdivision committee. We did meet last month, although we did not have a quorum, so we were not able to conduct any business. We will meet again the last Friday of this month, um, 9 o'clock for my meeting.
June 25th.
Following or before?
Before, I'm sorry, 8 o'clock, sorry.
Okay, so ours will be at 9 o'clock. And then item number 10.
Move.
Adjourn, we, we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return.